It's really trying to sort of make sense. Like right through the last, it's like, we're saying lots of words. But it's not, it's not still, I don't know, it's not, it's not. Yeah.
No, you can't read that.
It's good, it's good. When I look at the radio on, I'm like, oh, I'm gonna go.
Can't read that.
So if we're getting, we'll find your feed for the only green.
Okay.
We'll radio about ours and then ours. And some of your courses. My talk is true. We'll see.
Can you?
I think.
That's why it's good to start with.
That's like an interesting. Well, that's.
I would do that.
Jack. So these are nice, this is our house. It's something I just. All right. But what, what's up? I should be glad you're here. It's been a while. They're complaining or whatever. It's all right. It's not before.
I'll take it.
We're not, we're not.
We know, we ask you. Yeah. I like how they're taking it in.
Well, it's hard to say.
Right. Okay.
No, it's not.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
I know.
Yeah. 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 Wait, you press that. Yeah. Okay. He's got. She's like, yeah, whatever. But we had them, or go to the prom. She knows. She's ready to actually.
That's not great. That's what she wants to do.
But it's like, hopefully now.
Well, it's not your. Yeah, it's not right out. Yeah.
Yeah.
Does she know?
Oh, yeah. Oh, my. Yeah. 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 Really.
It's like, let's tone it down.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
We can't do that.
That's how I, that's how I.
So all of us are just trying to do. Yeah. Just want to. We've got.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
These give us a little. You're a good guy. Yeah. Is this in particular?
You're a successful man. I don't need to pass that. It's just.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Appreciate it. The first time. I was getting to the year. Yeah. What is it? Oh, I have a question. Oh. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
I think I'm like, uh, so well. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Oh, no, I got. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Okay, like phone order committee, the whole meeting Monday, June 3rd, 7:00 P.M. Door, will you please call?
Peters.
Here.
Bolts.
Here.
Serrano.
Here.
For both.
Here.
He's sitting here.
Wherein.
Here.
And Fontaine.
Here.
So, sure.
Thank you very much. First up, community economic development chairman, Keesling.
Yes, we had a presentation about this about two weeks ago, two weeks ago. And I think we asked our questions. Has anybody else had any more questions?
I do.
And Ask Pat, he was with the consultant the most amount of time. I can answer what I don't know, so go ahead.
Right, um, in none of these, Pat, do I see the Suarez building? Why is that? Am I missing it?
I think you're just missing it.
Yeah.
All the entire Hoover district is it.
But it's in none of these that shows, you know, the color of them that I saw, that it's in there. So can we look at that then and make sure that that is in there? You don't have to do that, but let's make sure that that is. Because I couldn't believe that wasn't. And I looked at one of the pictures and that's why I came by the other day and got colored ones, because of black and white ones are very hard to see. So unless you know which one it is, I even had someone else look over it too.
DRD 1, isn't it?
Yeah.
DRD 1 was the parcel number. Their entire property is in one parcel number.
Well. There, D1's right there. I want to see. That's not the Suarez. We're warehouse building.
334 Orchard.
Yeah, that's not it. Well, it's not in the picture. So I just want to make sure, because we don't want to make a mistake like that.
Yeah, DRD 3.
DRD 3. Nope, so not blue. It's not blue. I, you know, I marked the ones where it's at, every one of these.
Yeah.
Is it District 3?
That's something we can make down.
Yeah, that mark's got to be. I got a color. I mean, that's hills.
And, um, here, just take a look at that. If someone sees you see that, that's. That's one.
And I've got the black and whites. I think works on it. I can't find it, uh.
Two, three.
I'm going to draw. Maybe the map has been misdrawn.
You got a big X on it.
I got a big X on it, on the building, and they're not glued out, and everyone that was close to it.
Well, it's not. That's what you're saying.
Okay, it's not the color coded.
Yeah. No, if you're like, it's not the map, it's not blue.
All right, so that's something we probably should take care of. Um.
It's the parcel number.
There we go. And right there. There it is. It's that checkered building. That's, when you see it, it's the.
Right there.
Okay, so that's not blue. Is that, what's that parcel number? Is it in the ledger? I don't know.
Yeah. Any request? No, can you?
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
That sounds like a problem.
Yeah. We got it, I'm. I just wanted to.
Yes, that is, uh, 1000419.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's in parcel number 10000419, which is DRD 1.
1?
Okay.
It's not colored.
No, it was to read that. Definitely. So you need to make sure that the picture at least shows it. So we're good? That is in there?
It's in there.
Okay.
Like, right, it's a good observation.
All right. Send the recipe.
It's just not blue.
DRD 1, it's just not blue. And color. It's the parcel number.
That's one.
100419.
That's it.
Yeah.
Other questions?
I'll get that.
Okay, I'll figure it out. Um, when we do create this, are we able to create dates and progress, kind of dates and finish dates and penalties that those dates are? Are we going to do any of this stuff? And we, or, I mean, as this thing goes through?
Uh, well, as you, as you may recall, at the time that these go into effect, when you pass them, the mayor signs them, it's like a starting then going off to a race. Clock starts, you have 10 years minus every second that it takes. So if a new, if a company wants to tear down buildings between, you know, 6th and 7th Street Northeast, we're exporting cards, et cetera, and take out a block. And to the time that they come in and apply for it, there's only nine years left. They only get nine years worth of, up to nine years worth of DRD credit. Now, it's subject to negotiation. We don't have to give them nine years. We don't have to give them 70%. Depends on the nature of the project. That's what they're asking, they'll have to look at. Some projects may be more rewarding than others.
Right. Well, I'm just trying to give us an advantage, so when someone says they're going to do something, that it gets done when we want it to get done, not wait till the 10th year, which we need to afford it. That's why I go.
Yeah, that's why we want to do them all at the same time. Is I don't really care, because we really shouldn't care, where on Main Street this stuff happens. But if somebody has an interest on South Main, that they want to take down a few buildings and consolidate lots and build something new, they understand that it's in their best interest not to wait till the ninth year, because they're not going to get the taxes. They're going to want, they're wanting them right now.
I understand it too. We surely don't want to do this and wait, and wait for those folks. And that's why I think it's important, whatever language we put in these things is, uh, if you have.
Well, I think to answer your question, unlike a CRA where the tax proceeds go to the developer, those monies are going to flow to the city for dispersals. So to answer your question, you would have a regular contract with the party. And then if the party failed to perform, we simply turn the speaker off.
To a control over the funds and the account.
We absolutely have control.
Do a different account for every different parcel.
That is correct. Every project within a DRD would have its own separate contract.
So, and so this is just from my understanding of the two, I've been asked this question here. Let's just say we approve something over there, the property tax starts increasing, moving for the next two years, and they don't even get started for the next three years. We still collect that every year, even though it starts moving? No, we don't. Okay. If you ask someone there, I got me over there. Okay.
Well, it's only going to start if there's, uh, the property tax values, one of them, uh, what you're trying to, we're only going to collect based on the change in the property value as a result of the project moving forward, to tear down, rebuild, or it's a modification, they put a million dollars into it, whatever it is. That's when, eventually that number gets certified to the auditor. The auditor collects the taxes, sends it to the treasurer. The treasurer sends it to the city.
And how often do they do that, just reassessing the taxes? Can we hear?
Well, I mean, there's a couple ways that they do it.
Something with 7.
Uh, generally on a big project, project like that, the auditor would do that immediately. But they also have a regular schedule where they go back and review all buildings that haven't been looked at for a while.
That's a good question.
That's about three years.
So hypothetically, when they do work to the building, they get permits, they get approved and signed and done, and then it gets turned in, correct? So that's like the tracking of the improvements to the little state.
Yeah, and they would want it re-certified, because they want the taxes in.
Right.
So they would want the auditor to come out and look at it.
So the sense that I have is that as we do the improvements, that's the incentive to get it done and get credit for it, so those value scopes that they have access to that money is always played in the right sandbox.
If we can collect, we'll be, so the income tax or the property tax is going to be collected, but how it is used, that's, that's how the city is going to determine how those funds, you know, typically, so if this, this building here, let's say it's a building that we're in right now, it's City Hall, but let's say the building is normally, the property tax is a million dollars, right? Valuation, and this goes up to 20 million. Well, that increase in the property tax, the property owner has to pay. But then what, what is done with that money, that's where we determine under the downtown redevelopment district, how that money is used. In some cases, it could go right back to the company that's paying it. But we do also have the flexibility of utilizing those funds from other sources too. So we could put some of the money into, uh, the CIC. You could put it into another, another structure.
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure, right. Pros, libraries.
I think by having nine districts, that's, we'll make a big impact in the downtown district. Eight, eight, I'm sorry. Did we lose one?
Yeah, we did.
Okay. So we had eight, I lost one.
We presented eight, but we, we couldn't do the ninth one.
Okay, not enough acreage.
Right.
Those 10 acre piece, I guess.
Right.
So the eight DRD districts will be powerful, because it will create that, that gravity we're looking for to help propel us to what we've been missing. So I'm excited about it. I'm really excited about it.
I just want to make sure we can go with them. Um, on this thing here, why are, why are the yellow? Those are the ones, I was trying to read this. The ones that are yellow, meaning, is that.
What, the highlighted ones?
Yeah.
That's just parcel number and the assessed value.
But there's some that aren't yellow, so does that mean that those weren't included?
All the ones that are listed in the list, what are the, are not included in the DRD.
Okay.
That's just a editor's discussion point.
Okay, and then another thing, I was reading through this thing, there's a chance to create an innovative district along with the DRD. Are we going to pursue that?
Uh, we are, we are going to pursue several different things. I think the next thing that's on the agenda as part of this is the entertainment district, then innovation district. But the entertainment district is something that we feel that will be more right now, because of the restaurants that could be here, save for, uh, liquor permit issues. And the entertainment district helps address some of those things. The innovation district would be working on getting, you know, the.
Gigabytes.
You know, the gigabyte up and down service into here typically that goes out to a university as an anchor. Uh, we're looking at more getting it into the central core.
The innovative district, if you put 100 gigabytes in, you become an entertainment district.
Kind of like that.
Trying to get more high-tech stuff with different funds that they'll be able to receive, so you can be qualified then and say. I've had some people approach me about that, of just putting something on our water towers and we could really, so with something we've tried.
It's more than just putting out the water.
Yeah, that's the beginning of it.
You got, you have to run fiber.
Yes.
From its dispersed point, you know, to the city. For instance, we talked with, like, we had talked with the city of Fairwood about the service that they provide, and they'll get, you know, uh, their internet service from another entity. They have the fiber run to Fairwood, and then Fairwood was running all the fiber around the city. But that piece that came from the internet service provider to Fairwood, you know, for that 100 gig service was done. That's kind of the thing that we would need to do here. Somebody has to provide that to us. It's not something we want to do, but there's a lot of them out there that are available now.
We went to Kent State, remember that, in conference we went to, on support utility. So, I mean, as we move forward with the changes downtown, and with the 75 million millennials that are going to populate our earth, as they are, we obviously want to make sure we're geared for that trend, and it's coming, much as not.
That's all the questions I have. I don't know, I think it's terrific. Really good questions, and I will continue to.
I need to follow up. I had a couple comments. Sure, I got it right. Okay, Mike, it's not, I guess, a conservative statement I'll make. Um, District, or DRD 6, um, I think the vision in my mind, once this gets done, we'll be optimistic, say it's going to happen across the street. There's going to be so many units there, frontage commercial, mostly main street real pickup, and other things will have to be rounded. I really feel that that, that area there, that green space should remain a green space. I think you're going to need it. I think we should concentrate on redevelopment of existing buildings, replace those, enhance those, because I think that would just be a great asset to have in this community, where everybody owned it, when schools are rusted down the road or whatever, we collaborate with it. I just think it's important to have a green space area near downtown, because we won't have it. We'll have parking lots, maybe because of St. Paul's, but we won't have any green space. So I think that's important to consider, just for, just for record. Appreciate that. That probably isn't, you know, just speaking candidly, not the direct focus for that. I mean, I think that the council has to wrestle with the idea that there is very little, you know, land available inside the city limits that's developable, where we can generate income producing jobs. And, and this is a, if you look at that, it's a approximately 9.2 something acres. And just as an idea, not saying that this has been invented or anything, not even pursuing it, just trying to give council color, that's all.
But if you, if you took, say, the north of Washington Square, there's some professional office buildings, north of Wendy's. If you've seen them, there's five of those. Each one holds four professional offices, one holds six. That total acreage for that, including all the parking that goes with that, is four acres. So to me, it would seem that you probably have room for both. You've got nine acres there. I think nine acres in the middle of the city is a park. Certainly beyond what is downtown Canton is their green space, which is the city block. But I think if you could get some income producing revenue that you better serve in the long run to help pay for maintaining that green space.
Well, I just think we should think about it. I appreciate development, commercial, community development. I just, you know, make sure we leave room, like I said, to have a core area we can utilize. Because, like I said, I'm hoping this happens. Hoping that wherever it happened, you were already maybe seeing a need for that area. So I just want to make sure we take that into consideration. Second thing is, I guess, when we pass this, I guess, we're invoking our trust set into mayor, director of administration, and director of law to make future decisions on this. Is there anything coming back to council? Or is this a decision that...
That squares with my comments. I believe that the ultimate authority should rest with the council. We authorized the administration and our employees to negotiate on behalf. Ultimately, the decision, I believe, should rest with council.
Are we sure that the language is there?
No. Let's keep in mind, because Marshall was probably just about to point out, because she, in her committee, she's responsible for the Turks and CRAs and all that stuff. Every one of these is going to follow the same form. It's going to all have to be run through the Turk or the housing council, whatever it is. All that has to be approved by the county team. Generate report that the city council is going to have to approve. And then it's all going to have to be filed with the state. Every single deal is a separate thing that has to go through the council. And certainly, you know, the administration would not want to be in a position where we're negotiating something and we don't have the support of council ahead of that time.
Amen.
So my comment, I can tell that Daryl and I spoke a little bit. I think, so I differ a little bit. I think if it did come back to us as a body, not as one of us on the committee or one of us on the Turk, one of us on the housing council. I think it unfortunately does put a lot of politics in play. And who are your friends and who wants what? And I know this is, so I think by running it through committees with only one or two of us on there or, you know, you can make me, I can be whatever, you sort of take out that edge. And I just feel like we're elected and sometimes we've got to keep ourselves away from some of this stuff to some extent.
Still has to be through the council.
And yet it's approved by us, not negotiated.
No, no, I don't mean that council, as a seventh body negotiates. I just think we don't want to run into situations where we had other CRAs agreements and it maybe wasn't as transparent as it should have been. And I'm not, I'm just talking. These roles change in these chairs. This isn't just us. I mean, do I have faith in Pat and Laura and you guys? Yes, but that doesn't mean something might change next year to your, to that or we've got a tender process here. That's all I'm making.
And I think all Pat is saying is there is a process in place. There are dollars with the Turk and the housing council and the reinvestment.
So I think really what council's clarifying is that any decision that's going to be determined for the downtown redevelopment district, they will be approved by city council. Ultimately, it will be approved by city council. You may have various committees where members of the council will be on, you know, the committees as you're going through the state process. But ultimately, we want the council to approve it. So that we don't have something like we did with the CRA where...
Dan, I think the better place to express that is in section five of this ordinance. This section five is not safe.
Well, keep in mind, since twenty-eight of the Republican, what they were suggesting is that the Hoover District DRD operating committee would consist of the mayor, the director of administration, director of law, representative from the local bank, chair of the CIC, and a minimum of two DRD district property owners appointed to the committee.
I think we're talking about two different things. I think there is an operating committee. By ultimately, the operation proceed should rest with...
That committee was to make recommendations to the city council on the rates, terms, capital investment requirements of grants and loans to owners. You talked, and that's more than reporting anything. Negotiate rates and terms of grants and loans with owners of historic non-historic buildings and DRDs. That's what the operating committee does.
I appreciate that on that.
How much is H twenty-eight?
Right.
I'm not sure that that's, is that reflected in the language of the ordinance however. Instead of report, I guess we're going to adopt that as attachment. But couldn't report itself be clearer to that point? Or, excuse me, could the ordinance itself?
Can we make it clear?
I mean, we fully support and what we want is that whenever we're making a big decision for the downtown redevelopment district, because you're talking, you could be talking millions of dollars in property tax. So we want the council to give that final approval. So you have the operating committee that consists of various members that, as Marshall had said, you know, you're involved in the negotiations or the development of the agreement. But then ultimately, it will come back. And if it's not clear in this language, we want it to be crystal clear.
Put it in one sentence, that's all, but all things...
We can, I believe section five is the consultant looking at the overall authority
when you're executing contracts, that final step, that last step is signed by the mayor, pointing out that the director of finance has the funds sufficient for the project, the director of law for form and content, that's the final portion in there. But what we may do there in section five is perhaps just before that, or incorporated with that, each DRD agreement shall be approved by a safe resolution council and then the agreement approved by mayor. So council shall have a say.
Thank you.
Very good. One other thing, you mentioned a ninth one. You know, I've had questions last time about those ten properties of Knights of Charlotte. I mean, I think it'd be a great idea to get those in. I don't know why we would leave those out.
Yeah.
It was about ten acres.
There's, there are more than ten acres?
The school property consists of nine point something acres. So you can't go over ten acres in the DRD. So you can't get the seventeen properties that are on Charlotte, which you'd have to acquire. They're residential properties.
That's a large question. We can, if you actually create a ninth DRD at a time, it'd be inappropriate.
Why don't we just create one now? What's holding that back?
You don't have enough, your acreage is too high. You can't get all seventeen of those properties along Charlotte.
If that's what you're talking about, not portage. Really, on portage, we're on portage. The ten properties that just go, you know, that block is on there. We want that block to be something someday, whether it's a park or whatever it is. You've got to have those ten properties to make it a whole. And that's why I'm saying now, for the future, that looks like something that we should be going after on this, instead of coming back and redoing it then. Does everybody see what I'm talking about here? Which one are you on?
I'm on DRD six, number six.
It didn't connect to historic, like, you couldn't get it connected to historic issue. We talked about...
Yes, on the old park, on portage, I misspoke. I said Charlotte, but I meant portage. Seventeen properties that we would have to acquire on portage, the old portage, to add to that. And that puts us well past ten acres.
But you're saying so much.
There has to be a historic anchor.
But we couldn't get the anchor.
Right, because the anchor, we've got to go all the way back across the street to the Hoover District to pick off one of those. And remember, is that, I don't know, but the main, the main one on the corner of East Maple and Main, the old West Factory, we keep going back and up. They created one parcel that's huge. So you can't get a piece of it. If it was like ten different parcels over there, then you could grab one of these, one of those, one of those, which is what we did with most of the other stuff. But they have a super huge parcel that we, it stands by itself as a DRD.
Pat, is it possible to, this is just thinking broad and wide. Is it possible to have a resurvey and skim a piece off and create a new legal description? And stick, like, in other words, that make peace, you can skim off a piece, have a survey, set start county regional plan, and get a new legal description, parcel number, and then make that part of the next DRD hypothetically?
Yes, that is a possibility. The more likely possibility is just establishing a CRA for the residential properties because the residential is really not supposed to be in DRD anyway. But it doesn't mean they haven't been done, they've been done. But if for some reason you need to acquire those properties to make this an offer there, you could put a CRA into the residential portion of it. It'll get you there and everything.
Oh, I know, that's what, because I'm going to say, ten years from now, why and how can you put those in there? I don't have to come up. What about, what about the school there? That's got to be a historic property.
No.
That big, Charlotte School over there?
No, the old, but not historic. No, it has to be on the federal register of historic places or to be a federally registered historic district. You know, the only other property in town at the moment that qualifies with that description is the Hoover, you know, Hoover Home or Farm or whatever it's called out there now, the historic building that is on the register of historic places. And you could build DRDs out there with that as an anchor for perhaps that six point six acres of land that's still available north of Washington Square. But that's, you know, largely built out and new. So there just didn't seem to be any upside to the economic values that you could do out there.
Patrick's point about CRA, I think it's important to remember that on DRD, the maximum allowable amount is seventy percent percentage on CRA. Remember, it's a hundred percent if you're looking at a project. So there is a certain advantage you have in the CRA perhaps in that joining area where you might have higher costs associated.
Seventy percent in ten years without school district approval. But you can go beyond this the day that the school district buys in, and that is their property.
But seventy percent is the number, correct?
You could go higher than that, but the school has to approve. And what we're saying about that over there, that might be in their best interest. As we, and we've talked with them, we've had some meetings, you know, aligning our strategic vision. And that could involve, you know, swapping some parcels out.
So the DRD, what it does is it gives, it gives the city a larger percentage to have authority over. A CRA is fifty percent, the DRD is seventy percent for the city. And the city has ten years to determine how that seventy percent would be used. Whereas CRA, we can determine fifty percent for the property taxes and no more. And then the school approves the other fifty percent.
And the terms locker too, correct, twelve to fifteen, right?
Yes, on the CRA, you can go fifty percent for up to fifteen years. And again, with the CRA, there's no starting then. It's not the clock is winding down. It's the clock doesn't even start until the, until the date is ready.
I think this is great, thank you.
One other clarification too, because I think one of the members had brought this up about, you know, why are we doing them all at once? Because Patrick and I had had that discussion originally, like, you know, maybe we should stagger it. Maybe we should say, okay, we'll do this part of the Hoover District first and then maybe two years we'll do the next one. But what we don't know is what businesses are going to want. You know, we can't predict what parcel is going to be the prime parcel for a particular company. So we just thought, we're just going to put it all up front, right from the very start. So that as businesses come through, they'll be open to the whole menu of options in order to take advantage of that. But again, once we approve it, you've got ten years on that seventy percent. So it's important to, you know, take advantage of this as possible for companies.
So I believe we need to set a public hearing, correct? Would we do that?
Well, there's some, there's some ongoing meetings that I think we would rather, we would like to get a little more resolution on before we get to that point. So we would like to come back at the, at the next instance of a committee of the hall where we feel we have something to move forward with in our discussions with some of the other parties involved here. And at that time, we can do that.
We always can have a public meeting for information and feedback from the public. But the state statute for the downtown redevelopment district, there's no requirement. We can do that, but there's no requirement.
Okay. We'll do it on for two weeks and then give us an update. Great. Next, on the agenda is requesting that we send over a planning mission. We talked about this a week ago, right? It's the page I was... About the accessory use regulations offenses to walls.
This is just formal.
Okay, so we're formalizing it and sending it over to the planning. Give us a resolution meeting next week, if that's okay with everybody. Okay?
Is everyone okay with that?
I thought we did that last time, so I apologize. So we're good? Okay. All right, that's it? No, you wanted to amend the agenda to include...
A correction to ordinance concerning Howard, Whitmore Orchard Zone. I think that's what's going to...
So Jeff, I'd like to motion to amend the agenda to add, I concede my committee amending the map for the rezoning.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven up.
Yes, in reviewing the documentation, the ordinance was properly drafted. It references properties on Orchard, Howard, and Whitmore. And the language in the, in the ordinance that specifies the parcel numbers are all inclusive and accurate. Attached as part of that was a map. And the map that was attached included all but three of the properties. So I emailed all that to you today. I printed out a copy of the map for you today, et cetera, et des. And so it's three properties. It's one on Orchard, three eighty-nine Orchard. And then it's a vacant lot next to that, at three eighty-nine Orchard. It doesn't have a number, it's a vacant lot. And then on Howard was the other one, and it's a vacant lot. I think that's currently being used by ACY Communication for some storage of some material. But it doesn't have a house number, so it's just parcels. Those were all included in the ordinance. It just needed the map, so I did that front and back. We haven't voted on this yet. Due for its first reading next week. So I thought it would be better to amend it in committee here so that when we get there, we have a clean piece of legislation.
Correct, it's just a technical correction. I'm fine with that. We amended it for our first reading, are we okay with that? Yeah, we went to planning that way, so.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, we'll put on the, change it and put on the amendment next week.
Amended, covered.
As amended.
I have a revision too regarding signage. Is that coming up next? Is it my turn?
Financing properties next according to President's agenda.
I suppose you got after her on the signage for market.
Yes, you're not on the list at all. You have to get on the list.
We have to.
You have to amend to allow you to speak on it, sure.
I'm just trying to get this all figured out.
So we got...
My idea, just wait until...
I just wanted to get it down.
For the record, that's outright teasing. Because when you read it, you might not catch... So nuanced with it.
Okay, next up, finance problem, chairman of where?
Okay, I know I'm a good one. We talked about the Johnson Control installation and they presented to us and then we tabled a week or a week ago, maybe two weeks. And I think since then, Justin has talked to a couple more individuals and was kind of finding out, he says, we need to write your presentation in mass the other day, and the CEO of Aqua, we've had a lot of conversations about, had asked me to present and that's why I talked. I was kind of about kind of what we're doing and looking at this and they have sledge and chain. And he said, oh, you don't even do that, they'll just buy you. So I said, well, you're not going to buy us. We like our water treatment plant and, you know, we're treating it well. But the funny part, maybe think is, if we don't react and start doing things to help facilitate what we're doing with the sledge and removal, there may come a time where someone buys us. Because it's just not going to be good for us to run it anymore. We're not going to be able to get the sledge out and move. So it really made me start thinking about, well, what can we do? Looking at that proposal and the immediate, the immediate nature of some of these things. And I got some figures, oh, I actually asked them how I'm given it. They did hire a whole person, and the person's an engineer. And they said that it was important to have that. It just couldn't be, it just couldn't be anyone. It was a really special task job, took a lot of time. He did an advantage and it was a whole nother job that they created. So when you look at that and the cost and, you know, what that is, that's just something to think about. And then I did get some numbers from Justin on some different rates of what they were charging. So if we did like the whole project, it was two million one. And then if we hired an engineering, and if we hired a construction manager, and then if you had change orders and the management fees, you'd be up to about two point four. So there's about a three hundred thousand dollar difference in there based on what Johnson Control was going to do. And then listening to all of you, I thought, well, maybe there's a way that we could really start moving on this, but maybe just piece mill it together and say, could Johnson Control do the sledge press? We take that part, we wait on the children, we wait on the lights, let's see how they do. They manage it, they run it. I don't think Pat has the time to do that at this moment. And I know Pat and Laura were kind of excited about this project and just looking at what we could do with it. It helps our infrastructure, our investment in our water system. And I just, I wanted to bring it back and see what you guys thought. See if possibly we could amend it, maybe move forward on the sledge press. Yeah.
Wasn't there, wasn't there cost like ninety-six thousand dollars for it? That's it? That was bottom line?
And I asked her, I said, well, so where are you making your money? Like, what's in this for you? Kind of the same sum of this. So the engineering, you know, really are going to make a cost for that. They don't make any money on that. But what they do make it, but it's like every business, is there like, the management, so they put a ten percent fee on the front end and maybe the back end. Know the front end for sure, and then maybe have some change orders. So that's where they make their money. And I want them to make money too, in their business, I get it. But we're not losing any money. I mean, this is helping our city and we're moving forward on a very important part, which is a big revenue generator for us. And I want it to be like Aqua. And I want them to be like, he was kidding, like, we're going to buy you. That plus half.
What did Aqua say for any area yet?
He said, well, he did, just that there was a whole other cost. But he said it was definitely a hundred thousand. It was a lot. It was a lot to manage it.
Probably close to two hundred thousand.
Yeah, I mean, and I looked at, you know, at the Johnson Controls and I'm like, all right, he said it was three hundred, I'm going to take hundred off of that just because. So we're still at two hundred with that. So I didn't know. And I haven't even, I haven't talked to Laura about, do we finance this much? Is our enterprise funds, you know, what can we do? I don't know. But I just wanted to bring it back because I felt like it was important to our city. And I think we need to move on some of these things. We talked about this a lot. And from our conversations, none of us are obsessed.
Okay, I got a question. So it's two point two million is what they said initially. And they said, we did the whole kidding, the little three point two amortize over twenty years, three point eight, which is one point two million in interest, right? It's a cost neutral experience because, you know, we are going to save us money. So my thinking was, when I talked to Laura and Rob, we were saying, since we're on a pretty aggressive replacement plan for the water lines, they were doing an assessment to see over the next five years, what needs to be addressed to be proactive and what is necessary that needs to be done. So if we could delay one of those projects, we would be able to pay cash pretty much with the two point two million. But they're the experts. The second thing is that if Mark being here, Mark, right? Mark is definitely the water guy and he's pretty familiar with the project and he's communicated with many of the people locally. So he's here and I bet he'd be more than happy to answer any questions. And Mark, we had some conversation with him, so why don't you guys take it away?
Well, and I think one way to think about it is, you are very opposed to the interest. I feel a little bit differently. I feel like for a city moving forward and for infrastructure and what our whole total budget is...
But I don't believe it's really infrastructure per se.
It is.
Well, the lights and the coolers and the boilers.
This is infrastructure. You look for the revenue from it?
No, no, we're talking about lights, we're talking about green. I'm saying that the big piece here is the two point two mil for the sledge press. And the purpose of the sledge press is so that we can ship away without using specialized trucking. And there's a slim chance we can sell to the farmers, but that's a real slim chance. The reality is, is that we can haul away quicker and more efficiently. But how often, it's just like anything, you know, to recoup that two point two million, we're talking years and years. So unless we can pay as we go, it's not like building a building or something. This is like...
But this is how, yeah.
It's kind of like a heating system. It's like...
That's going to be broken, that we're not going to be able to use.
Well, in normal circumstances, when you run a business, you have to set money aside for these long-term projects, stay up to speed.
But people take out loans all the time for businesses.
Do you take a loan out for your furnace or your silver?
I have had one, actually, Jeff and I said that.
My point is...
People do though.
My point is that it's not very prudent to be able to operate that way. I'm just saying, we have the wherewithal to do it. If we work our finances properly, if we can delay one project for one year and it's not critical, use that money and pay cash for it and be done with it. That's, I'm just saying, that's the bottom line. It's foolish to finance anything unless it's like life or death or infrastructure. This is something that doesn't have to be done immediately or just looking long-term.
I don't think it's foolish. I think if you're looking for your city to move forward... Yeah, and I agree. And I just think sometimes you have to put money in to make money. So you're reinvesting in the trial water.
I'm very familiar with this, I've run one of the...
I get it, I'm very familiar too. I work with one. I see budgets all the time. I see nonprofits.
Well, I own one and run one.
That's great, good for you.
And I have employees, so I get it. I'm just saying, I'm very cognizant of the money. And if you don't pay as you go, then you get yourself in trouble. If we have a downturn in the economy, then we're still on hook for something, for $2 million or $3 million. To me, I just say, it can still be done in pieces parts. We could do, like Rob and Laura, they communicate on what their progress is with that, if any. And then I'm sure Rob, Patrick wants to tell me something. Go ahead, Pat.
I'm not going to jump in between the two of you. I don't want to be bruised anyway. But let me just say this. I probably would disagree with the notion that it's not important. I don't think of it in that regard. There are four sledge lagoons, they need to be emptied. They are contingent upon weather. You know, we put the sledge in the lagoons to hopefully allow Mother Nature to dehydrate and evaporate some of the liquid out. Have you noticed, you know, Ohio becoming one of the next Great Lakes? This past day, it makes the process more difficult. If we can't get it to dehydrate, then they're hauling it out in a larger form. The truck won't hold so much, it's that much more that has to be trucked. So, you know, what we're looking at right now is, we've been barely getting by spending $100,000 a year for the last, forever, to try to get the sledge out. And we're not emptying the number of sledge pits that need to be emptied. So we do have a sledge bid, it's going out. It's here in June, when the rest of the council meetings, and you improve that to out for bid. And we're going to get a new handle on what it takes to empty those. But we can't run the risk, if the sledge lagoons fill up and we can't get them emptied, then you're in a situation where you're having to alter what you're doing to the water. Because we have, that's a byproduct of the way we treat the water. And if you can't treat the water, then you have a bigger problem with it.
So if we eliminate one water replacement project, how much is a water, Rob? Help me out here, and Laura. How much is a water replacement project that we have when we do one or two lines? How much is that?
About $900,000 a year.
Did you hear what he said, $900,000 a year? So the project's 2.2 million or 2.1 million. So I'm just saying, can we work one of those, one of those projects and possibly work out another arrangement to come up with the money? I'm just saying, I believe we can, if we put our heads together, I think we can come up with the money. And not really hurt us, and we won't have to finance it. And then on the next stage, we take care of the streetlights, and then we take care of the, as you do the renovations here, the chillers and the boilers.
And I think, when I look back at all, many, many major companies, they've taken loans on infrastructure to keep improving the processes, which they hire people, they have bigger companies, and they're doing more.
My suggestion is, is here, Ford, we should put aside small percentages. I know.
Can I speak to the financing just for a minute? Because like you said, you know, I was thinking Eastbury, that was $700,000. That was one pretty good-sized waterline project. So three Eastberrys makes about the money you need for the press, given what Johnson's...
I agree, but I...
Let me finish, thank you. When you're looking at this, it's not a choice of you definitely have to finance or you definitely don't. I think you need to decide, do you want to do the project? And then if you do, do you want Johnson to guide the project? Whether you do or don't, I have no dog in that fight. If you have them do that, and they provide the engineering and provide the cost, then you make the decision, either we delay this for three years to save up the money, or we do it now and we finance it. But that's, to me, a different decision than whether or not you move forward with a particular company.
You could even do a hybrid. Okay, Jeff, you could do, we skip one project, that's 1 million, maybe we do some kind of creative financing. I'm just saying, it's not one or the other.
I know, it doesn't have to be.
Another thing that could help us, if I could, is if we had a set of plans in hand, I could go shopping that to our grant sources. If our grant applications are much stronger, when you have set plans in your hands.
Set plans?
And that could help us there.
So that's the solution to the problem, right there?
Not that we would give funding, but it would work pretty well.
Wait, set plans for what?
For the projects.
Why? They told us, you guys, they're not going to give us a set of plans.
They would have to give us...
But that would cost...
It wouldn't be like an 80-page set, like a normal set, but they would have to give us something, as Mark and I were discussing before the meeting. Because we're still going to have to get a PTI, I don't know how EPA, and they're going to want to see something. It may not be a real, you know, 200-set detailed, four-bid set of plans that we have 10 contractors look at. But they're going to have to give us something to go back to their vendors and also to the Ohio EPA, because they're going to have to permit this thing.
But that's what they do, that's their job. So I think she stood up here and said, listen...
Right, and they can help with their minimums, we could call it. That helps us shop it for grants or 0% loans or whatever we could look at.
I think we'd probably have to commit to them first. I don't know. I mean, I don't know why, they said they're not making any money on the engineering.
Right, yeah, we have to commit to some plan.
Right. Well, call your friends at Aqua, see if they'll just lay it out there.
Well, but if we're committing to them, what are they giving us? Are they giving us some form of a plan that Rob and Mark take to the EPA? And then Rob can take to grant, granting agencies to get free dollars? Or are they not willing to give us that?
No, I think at that point, they are. But at that point, we said, "We're going to pay your engineering fees, and we're going to report with the project. Take this package, do what you need with it, but then we're going to manage the project with whoever you have." That's their thing, they manage it the whole way through.
Can you say something?
As we talk about this, I think Patrick may have... One of his were downplaying, but he probably softened the urgency. I think we have four lagoons, correct? We have five. How many of those are at capacity now?
Well, up until the last month, we've had two emptied and half of one emptied.
So you've had two...
We hit the window very hard, but again, it's rained in the last week, so they had to stop this week.
Okay, so again, of the five lagoons currently, how many are...
Two and a half.
Two and a half are at capacity, correct?
Yes, and it takes three months to fill one.
So what Patrick has told us is that if we get to a point where those other two we have are filled up, we can't haul them off, we will not be able to soften water, correct?
We'll be stacking.
It's a problem.
It's a problem. We can stack it, we can buy time, which we've done in the past already.
How much time do we have? How much time do we have?
Right now, right now, you have about seven and a half months, with the two and a half over.
And so when we get into winter, does it change because of the weather?
Well, you have two windows, like we were talking. You have the spring when the farmers will take it in this form. You have the spring right now, or late spring, early summer. And then you won't have another window until after the crops come off the fields in the fall. And last year, we couldn't get any off because the fields were so wet. We couldn't. That's when it got into the problem.
To put it in powder form.
Right.
We can stockpile it at the farmer's fields in the dry fall. You know, it eliminates part of the problem.
What's the, what's the savings, say to do this right, every year we clean it out? It's $200,000. I'm throwing a figure out there, it might be close to it. Okay, what's the savings when we go with this sledge press after that? What's the savings on just operational costs, a new system in place that takes care of it?
I really can't say you'll save a ton of money. What's your, you're breaking even, but you're getting it now in a form that you can readily get rid of it, which is our problem right now. You're not going to save a lot on the sledge press process itself.
No, that's my, the end result. What we end up with, isn't there going to be a cost savings versus what transportation, Howard, Hannah, and...
Transportation costs will be a lot less on the dry side.
Versus the final result...
Taking out as liquid, you know, you're hauling it out as 95% liquid now, 5% solid in the truck.
She had some of those numbers, right, Mark? I think she had that somewhere. I don't have it.
Can we revisit that? I think that's critical, I think...
So if we know that right now, we're spending $105,000 a year, that's with not being able to get out as much as would be ideal? So let's take that as a conservative number. So if you think of $100,000 a year compared to a $2 million project, that's 20 years, 20-year payback. So, you know, once you hit that 20th year...
It's three months to fill the pit, so that you're basically four pits a year. And it's a little over $50,000 at the current price to get rid of a pit. So really, you're spending $200,000 a year. We just couldn't do it in the past because we couldn't get it out.
Right, I think that's my point. How are we saving on our, our operational costs of removing this?
It's just easier to get rid of, is what he said. The bottom line is, is like, I think it's a good thing, I just don't want to finance it, that's all. So I'm giving solutions to the problem. I think you guys will hear that out.
But you're saving that $100,000, because that's that pretty cost that we have right now.
But why, why do you not think that's a good, why, I guess, we need to look at that? So in order for this to function, we have to get rid of it, right? So isn't that the bigger picture, as opposed to us saying, well, we're saving X amount? This is just part of the process with us having a water treatment plant. Like, why are we even saying, well, in 20 years, we made our money back? We don't say that to the streets, well, in this amount of time, we've got 20 years. Thank goodness for this levy, or thank goodness for that. I don't understand why we're positioning like this, when this is like almost a must-have, in order for us to have the water treatment plant.
Well, I think it's a must-have, I think there's also savings involved.
Well, there are.
That's my point.
Oh, so you're like, oh, okay, you're like, this is a bonus.
Yes, I've been worried. If you get $96,000 to engineer this, go do it. You need to take the lights off and chiller and everything else, that's even less problematic.
It is.
That's my point. If that's your cost, I budget $250,000 a year, of which you're probably going to spend at least 200 of that if you clean out every pit every year. And that's just to keep up.
Yeah.
So you will be saving that $200,000.
So Mark, do you think if we would go down from, let's say we have to do the four and made it dry material, would it be just one time? Like, you know, so you get rid of all four? Is it, I mean, reducing the amount we have to get rid of by three fourths?
We're, yeah, you're about half.
Okay, okay.
So 100K a year instead 200K?
Okay.
You're still going to have a little bit of trucking fees.
So...
But there's where you can get the farmers to cover that, because they're taking it in a form.
Right. So the question is, is that we could use it, we should have it, we just don't want to finance it. So all we have to do is find the money to pay the 2.2, and then we get the system, and then we get it over time. That's the bottom line. What do you think, Jeff?
Break it down on the, on the interest, again, directly to my profane. So if, if my memory serves, you said that the, your interest calculation at the rate we came up, it was like 1.2 million?
That was for the 3.2 amortized over 20 years at 3.8. That's the whole process.
So that was for the whole thing?
That's right.
So let's just say, I'm not advocating doing the whole thing, but I'm just going to leave the interest alone for a minute and say that to do the $2 million project, the 2.2 million project, I'm going to say that your interest is $1 million over 20 years. If that's the case, that's $50,000 a year.
But what I was saying is...
What I'm saying is that you will spend $50,000 worth of interest, but you can save at least $100,000 in trucking costs.
I'm with you.
So to me, you're that positive.
I understand.
I don't understand.
Here's what I'm looking for, is just, can we just pull the money, like, real quick, guys? This is my whole thing. The 2.2 million or 2 million, why do we have to finance it? Can't we just pay for it out of the water fund, if we eliminate the...
If there's, if there's, if there are water money's in your board, can we eliminate them?
If they don't need replaced right now, I say delay it one year.
Not my water.
My water, you're still playing the game, I don't understand why...
Okay, guys, whatever. I'm just telling you, my opinion, I don't think you should finance it in. I think it's a good thing, I don't see why we can't do what Rob said, and give him the report, do the report, give it to him, let him get it right.
But I like what Laura said, we need to decide if we want to move forward with something like this, that Pat thinks is a pretty strong need. He works with that, I think Mark thinks it's a need. And see if we want to move forward with this, and then decide how we're going to work it out.
I think that comment got lost in the discussion, because we were talking about two different things. Are we going to go forward with Johnson with the sledge press? We can decide how we pay for it after the fact.
And if I could just throw out, if Johnson's willing to pull the sledge press out as a standalone project, that was about $66,000, right? It was just that, about $296,000.
$66,000 for the engineering?
Mark, you have some comments?
Trying to, but it's a good, go. Well, I met with the Johnson Control people also, and she arranged the numbers just like she do with you. She cut some things out, they want to get some business. And I understand they want to get, I'm not worried about them making money. I'm worried about us spending money, all right? On something that we don't need right away. We can do this over a period of time. I mean, you're looking at, I know you're looking at these costs here, the interest, I am concerned. I'm with Don on that, Don on that. I don't see why we're spending money we can spend over the next couple of years. Secondly, I asked Mark to come up here, because I want to ask questions. Do we need anybody to choose what time we need, and how much to engineer and all that? I want you, where are you looking at to get, do you know what you want as far as, what sledge press do you want?
Well, the two main companies are in the out of Michigan.
And where, and I know you brought him up here, because last time we talked, you didn't quite trust me, so I want to bring him up to answer the question.
Mark, can you come up to the mic, sure we can hear you?
Yeah, come to the...
But it trusts me.
You said, "Let's bring him up here," because, make sure that Mark's right on this. So let's, what are you looking at? You're looking at Kent, is that what you're looking at?
Yes, there's Kent.
Okay, why not?
Kent is the same size as us.
Okay. You're going to vote to allow you to speak?
Same amount of sledge.
Excuse us? You're going to vote to allow you to speak?
Mr. Allen. It's our office, we're talking about sledge presses.
We've looked at Aqua, they produce about three times the amount of sledge we do. They produce three times the amount of water we do. Kent is roughly $3 million a day, same size as us, so it was a good comparable. They have the same process, line so days as we do. So it was a good, very good comparable. They've had it for a while, it's been almost 17 years now, they say.
Wow.
So that's why we've compared them, and they have a very nice operation with conveyors and the way they load their trucks.
So we've been up to a little...
Right, and you pretty much know, you know, based on them, how the system would run and everything. You don't really, do you need an engineer to tell you that? Or do we have, and did those people require...
There are some processes along the way, we will need engineers. Do you help us with the change of process?[1610.92] There are some processes along the way, we will need engineers, to help us with the change of process, you know, you need those plans to go to the EPA and stuff like that, I'm not an engineer in that respect. Yes, I could spec out what we need, but at some point, we will need an engineer to draw it up and take the change of process.
And what is the cost of these, and how many do we need?
You need, you basically want to have a double redundancy system, everybody has done that, they get sludge presses, you have two in tandem, so if one's down, the other one can still run.
We're talking about this two point one, and that's two, two sludge presses, not one?
That's for two, yes, that was in-
What if we had one and used the lagoons for backup? I mean, you're, you're, you're putting two out there, other people probably don't have lagoons to back that up, why are we having one idle when they've filled their lagoons?
You don't think that happens more?
They're still full, like Kent's-
This is the worst, please, one person.
So that's for two sludge presses, then we're talking about this two point one, right?
Yes. But did you say- The original Johnson Controls, what?
Did you say that Kent still has the lagoons?
Yes.
And they're-
But they're full.
And they're full.
Thank you.
Okay, why are they full then, I mean, undone?
Well, they, they've never, they've never completely cleaned them out once, they, they are slowly cleaning them out.
But if ours was taken out, we could use one of those as a backup, could we not?
Yes, you could, and you should have a couple of left out there as a backup.
Why do we need two, is one of the questions, and then the other side of it is, have we ever had, we talked about this stuff, what if, have we ever stopped because our lagoons have been had a problem?
We got really close to this one.
Have we ever stopped?
No.
We're running this thing now, how many times, this act like, this is going to end tomorrow, this big sludge problem, and we're going to have this issue, because we have two now, and we have, no one's coming to pick it up. But we could use, buy one for one reason, and have the lagoon as a backup, could we not do that?
You could do that.
And, uh, the other question, you're still going to have to pay people to take it away, is that correct? We're not, some people threw around the number, we're going to make money on this.
I'm, I'm not sure that we'll make money on that.
Yeah.
But I do know they will pay at least the trucking costs to get this, because if they have to buy regular mine, it's twice as expensive for them. That's why they do like this process, because it has extra nutrients in it also, we have nitrogen, you know, there are micronics.
I'd love to just put a bag at the sum, I think they could really create something like that, a business.
Mark, from the seventeen years that Kent was running these sludge presses, did you ever ask them if they break down, you know, is there consistent problems with them?
We asked them about the routine maintenance, they have had a few minor breakdowns, nothing major.
Seventeen years, wow.
Mark, do they anticipate them to last well into the future, what's the anticipated useful life?
The main, the throwaway part to any of these is the plate press itself, the socks, there are socks, they replace those every so often. There was the big thing, they make a wash cycle for these, Kent has never changed their socks. Aqua changes them yearly, because they didn't put that one eighty thousand dollar feature on there. And each sock is about three hundred and fifty dollars, plus the man who takes the replays, swap the whole line, there's twenty-four plates on each line.
But the main press itself is a fairly long-term?
Yes, and it's, you know, the expected life is probably thirty, thirty-five years plus, minus some motors, you know, typical maintenance items.
So, so something that doesn't break down very much, we're buying two to back up something that doesn't break down very much, and we already have a backup with the lagoons, to me, that, that doesn't make a lot of sense when we're spending, we're not spending community mon, or corporate money, like you said, you're used to, I'm used to that too, this is government, this is people's money here, just can't spend some money back in some money.
If the lagoons are open for a backup, that is fine, one would be fine.
Anything else for Mark?
Well, I just have a question, I mean, one, I don't think we're doing community money or corporate money versus government, we all think about the same, Mark, we work for a big company that spends millions and billions in investment or reinvestment in infrastructure to sell drugs. So we're in the same business, so I don't think it's a matter of someone recklessly spending, you know, our, our people's money, but what we are looking at, and you pushed him, and you beat him like a dead horse, to say that, like, this isn't going to break, he told you, it almost went to capacity this year, and we had issues. What other, are you in the business of that, to say, let's push it to the nth degree so it doesn't break? It's a water treatment facility. He says if we can't get rid of this, it affects the people's water, this is a safety concern. And we're saying, administration is saying, we have problems with this, we talk about this again and again, and Mark even says, I'm going to need an engineer to help me with this, this isn't a project that I can do. Maybe Aqua need a better engineer for why they have to replace the, whatever you just said, that now they have to spend eighty thousand dollars on a year, I don't know, but, we were listening, we didn't bring this up. Patrick had, Johnson Control came up, they assessed the facilities, they're the experts in a lot of this stuff, this was their recommendation, and then Patrick said, this is something that we need, and he has stressed it again and again. So that's what we're going with, and now you have Mark up here, we've all answered the questions.
I've given, Mark's given all the information that we want, I'm for getting one, I'm not for financing none, that's the way I look at it.
But this is, why do you think you're the expert to stay with them when you wanted two?
I'm just, just asking Mark, that's what I asked him about.
You pushed him to stay, we need one, because we had extra lagoons, two is what he even simply could possibly use, just like Kent, it's like Aqua, I don't want any of them.
Hey, I'm okay with two, just don't finance it, that's all, get two tomorrow.
Mark, in the event that the, all five lagoons were not needed, whether you do two machines and you keep one lagoon, or you do one machine and keep two lagoons, whatever it is, are we also not looking, and have you, has this not been the case for the last twenty years, looking for a drying pad? For, and we've looked at building something down there, on that premises, and we don't have room, because this is, this affects, uh, the vehicles that we use in our, in our street sweepings and the like, and there's an additional cost that we have running down to, to Canton to use their drying pads, they charge us six hundred and fifty dollars every time we go down. Uh, so as many times as you want that street swept, know that I got to pay six hundred and fifty dollars to send it to Canton, and, and we've been looking and looking, looking for years, previous administrators, we've looked at this, previous councils, and it was a matter of buying land, we don't have, you know, where can we buy land to be able to do this, and we, I remember my first year here, looking down at the water treatment plant in the service state center down there, you know, is there aware of a place that we could do something there, and to me, I look at the lagoons as, there's a lot of available space there, if you didn't need all of them for however many councils ends up authorizing you to, if they authorized it. To me, it seemed to solve, potentially solve another long-term problem, where we weren't able to put a drying pad on, on civilian property, then we wouldn't have to go out and pay, you know.
That's correct, if you went to the far, uh, south end of the lagoon, you were past the three hundred foot of the wellfields, yes, they would potentially grant a drying pad.
So, and I apologize to the council that, you know, some of these things that, you know, run around in my head, I haven't shared, you know, the, the grand vision, uh, and, and again, I apologize, it's, it's probably just a function of, of trying to jump all kinds of things, and I don't mean to exclude anybody from the, the grand vision, but that's, that is something that we've been wrestling with for a while, and that, that fee from Canton went from like two fifty to six fifty, they don't want it, and what's it going to be when it's a thousand? And so it's, it's all about risk management, and I, I hear, you know, what, I remember Sareta saying, if you can get to a, a place in between, I think that's a great place to be.
Um, that makes it better, that you have a drying pad, and you can save money, because the street cleaner only goes so far, and then you have to dump it, and that's six hundred bucks a load.
And they gotta wash it.
And I don't think they're coming around my neighborhood very much to pick up those leaves, from what I can see, so I don't know what you're saying. But the idea is, is that, you know, drying pad is a good idea, I'm for two sludge presses, because I like redundancy systems, but I just want to see if Rob can come up with a plan, if we can pay without hurting anything, can we pull little funds here or there, lay a project, and just pay cash for it.
I sense some urgency in addressing this issue. We don't have to be unanimous on this. I'm going to request that the chairman prepare a proposal for our vote. However, however she wants to lay it out, and we're going to, we'll vote on it, and if it goes four, three in favor, then we're going to do it, and we're worried about the financing later on. But, uh, let's end the discussion, or let's get some action here. We don't have to be unanimous.
That's right.
And, uh, if it, if it gets beat, it gets beat, if it passes, it passes, and, uh, let the chips fall where they land. I just want to say one thing about, uh, about nearly at capacity. There was once a young mayor who had a visit from a fire chief, just after he became mayor. And the fire chief said, hey, did you realize that this past summer, we were nearly out of water? What? Because, yeah, we had two thousand gallons in one tank, we couldn't have fired a fire. That's a place nobody wants to be. And it resulted in the expansion of our, our production and treatment facilities, that conversation. I don't think we'd want to be in a situation where we're not treating our water.
Just don't.
So, do we warrant, time for action? It's called, if you've got, if you've got four people on the table, I'm one of them, I say, let's have something, and you lay it out, we'll look at it, we'll vote it.
I'm not against it, it's just the financing, but it needs to be set on the record.
Yep.
I want it, I don't want to finance it, that's the box.
You said it.
So, do we not just have a discussion a couple of weeks ago about five dollars a month, and saving someone fifty bucks a year, and now we're looking at, at, at financing something that's going to be a million to our community? I just, how, hard to understand that sometimes, though.
Oh, and that's how we were ranked, we looked at the road budgets?
Yeah.
It's eight hundred and fifty thousand.
Mayor, where do you stand on that?
So, um, you know, I, I think the discussions really helps, because it, it's real clear that we need to have greater efficiency in the treatment, the water treatment plant. So, when we're looking at the sludge presses, um, the sludge presses are going to, you know, they could save us up to a hundred and fifty to a hundred thousand dollars a year. It's real clear that we all agree on the mission or the goal, which is to somehow incorporate sludge presses at some point into our water treatment plant. It's also real clear, too, that time is of the essence, so we've got to make a decision. So the conversation that we're, that we're conducted with Johnson Control, it sounds like they're already willing to make adjustments to their proposal. So we started out, and I, and, and this is one of the concerns that I had too, is that it doesn't have to be everything that they originally presented, because I think the, the sticking points are, um, they were going to do the utilities for city hall, they were going to do the main street lighting, and they were going to do the sludge press.
And a chiller.
Well, does that-
A chiller too, I think.
And a chiller. So now we know that the biggest portion of the project, the most critical, is the sludge press. And, and the points, the, the two points that were brought up is really the method, are we going to finance it, are there any grants that are available, right? Uh, and also, do we go with two sludge presses, or we go with one, and a combination of sludge presses and lagoons? So, you know, those, those questions really haven't been answered real clearly. The question is, can Johnson Control come in, modify their approach, and can they make a, a presentation that will address the concerns about the financing? You know, maybe we, we tighten up the project, um, we set aside the main street lighting, we set aside the chillers, we set aside the utilities, we focus on the sludge presses, and then, you know, they can, they can help us to determine what their role is, which is they can do the engineering. But, you know, can we do that without doing long-term financing? And can we do that where we're not having to do, uh, two sludge presses, can we get, can we get by with, come on, maybe, maybe we can, or maybe, maybe we can't, so. It sounds like if we can have Johnson Control address those issues, that we could move, move into different areas.
Mark, thank you for coming up.
Yeah, thanks, Mark.
Thank you for your information.
Mark, thank you so much.
All right.
All right, so has, has everybody had their second?
Oh, yeah.
Thanks, Adam.
For the purpose of moving to the legislative agenda, so we have at least four in the finance committee to move this forward.
Yes, yes.
We have four?
Yeah.
All right.
No, we need to take it off the table. It was stable.
Oh, yeah, it was, it was.
But that's a different, that's a completely different perspective.
So mine would amend it, right?
You can either amend it or stop.
You can vote on it, so you can do whatever you want.
That's right, we did not vote on it.
Vote on it.
We didn't have a first reading?
We had two readings.
We had two readings.
We had two readings. He gets, he's on the table.
It's on the table, so.
We can tie it on the table, you can have a new piece of legislation.
Well, wouldn't you vote to table it after the second reading?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a stay on the table, you can have a new piece.
We could bring it back for the final reading, amend it as.
Right, so that we're agreed to have Johnson Control do two sludge presses?
Well, what we want them to do is to, is to be able to reasonably justify whether we need two sludge presses or-
Yeah, we'll give us a balance.
Right.
Yeah, right now, there's two right there, out there for both.
So I think, I mean, this, this is just my perspective on this, I think that there's a number of answers, that, you know, whenever there's a, a discussion and there's not agreement, it seems pretty clear to me that, that all the answers are not clear. That the answers that we have are not clear, if there's some areas, like, do we go with one sludge press, do we go with two, do we, and, and apply for grant funding? Should we apply for grant funding, uh, have Johnson Control do the design, could they do the design? Or do we have to make a long-term, twenty-year commitment on financing in order to do it? I think we could do it, we could take into consideration what Mark is bringing up, what Dominic is bringing up, I have those same concerns. I have those same concerns, I mean, a good turnout, a good turnout that, hey, long-term financing really could be the best way to talk about it. And it could turn out that maybe, maybe it's not, maybe we can do it in another method, we all agree on the goal, but we're just not in agreement with the method, so I don't think there's, I think we could take a couple of extra weeks and, and ask Johnson Control to come in, and, and ask them, and they're, and they're willing to break it down, and then say, hey, we have concerns about financing, long-term, how, how can we do that? I mean, if, if, if they could present a proposal, would you be opposed to that, Steph?
No, but I'm saying, what's different than what they did just two weeks ago? I mean, they've been in touch with all of us, they are willing to set up a new proposal, they're willing to break it down.
It was long-term financing.
Yeah.
Right?
But right now, we're just saying, we want you to move forward, that we said, the question was, are you doing that?
If you get the votes, you can go ahead and do it, and then what you have is, you still have, like, you still have, uh, issues that are brought up by two members of council and myself, that we're not clear on, so if you want to muscle ahead and just get the votes and get it done, we can do that. I don't think that's the best way to go, I think it's better if you try to gain agreement with everybody, and if you've got Dominic who's expressing concerns, or Mark who's expressing concerns, then address them.
Well, maybe it's a team.
Right?
I, I think some, some address them.
Go ahead and tell them, Johnny, have, have the experts, Johnson Control, come in and address them.
Here's what I heard tonight, for example, you have two options, and we may have disagreement, you can have two presses, or you can have a press and sludge presses.
Exactly, right.
That's a judgment call, you may not have unanimity.
That's a million dollar call.
Understood.
By experts, that it will make that call.
So, so you're saying we should do one?
Still million dollars, right?
What I'm saying, what I'm saying is-
You're saying just go ahead with two, and, and don't look at whether you need one or two, I don't think that's wise. I think we should look at it at least.
You could have, you could, you could have an analysis.
Exactly, right.
My point is this, Dave, is, is that many times around this table, there's an overemphasis upon unanimity. It doesn't have to be unanimous, reasonable people are willing to disagree.
Because, what I would like to see is the answer, so I'm just saying, in my, I, I don't, the unanimity is, is okay, what we're saying is that we really don't know whether we should get one or two, we really don't know.
Which, we just brought it to name by us.
So, so let's, let's get it addressed, and if there's, and then Dominic brought another issue, which is grant funding, is there a way that Johnson Control, I'm sure Shastin could work with us, and Shastin can come up, she's really brave and creative, she could come up with some ways that would probably incorporate a proposal that would include Dominic's concerns, Mark's concerns, and now the concerns of the rest. I think that'll be cool.
And I'm all, I'm all for the, like, I think everybody up here is for the presses, one or two, doesn't matter, whatever we need, we want, it's just the mode of financing it versus, and cash for it.
And is that, is that okay, is that all right, Stephanie, if we just look at it, like, give it another couple of options?
We've done it, trust me, I mean, we've had them up, and I'm sure they'll come back, because you have these new concerns tonight, because you've had things with Johnson Control, so we understand that.
No, 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 hold on, wait a minute, wait, no, no, I'm going to, I'm going to clarify this.
So we have them come back, and we will let them say all that they need to say again, because of course, we want all the answers, but remember, we were the ones that said whether we need one or two. So we've had an expert that has put this through, he said we needed two, that's why we went with that proposal, it was us that said, do we need one or two, us.
Who's us? I don't mean to ask that.
You said it tonight.
One or two?
You just said that tonight.
No, I said, I, I don't know where we got to in the first place, where did we get to?
That was in the proposal.
I know, but-
The expert said we needed two.
The expert, I'm sure, Johnson Control?
Yes, they were the ones that gave us the proposal.
So that means we shouldn't question them.
We are questioning it, but it's interesting that we came up with it tonight.
Right.
So are we putting this on the agenda then for next week?
Here's the chairman.
I have one vote.
I'm the vice chairman, and I believe we are putting it on the agenda, we are putting it on as the original proposal, minus the lights, the boiler, and the chiller, pull out everything else, I had a personal conversation with Pearson and Justin, and they are willing to pull everything out, they are willing to-
Talk about financing.
They're willing to come back up here, answer any questions we might have, we can ask about two sludgees versus one, but we're leaving two in the agenda, the legislation, because that's where it is right now, we're going to vote it up or down.
Could they show up with the financing, we'd like to see the financing of all that.
Right.
That's all I care about, that's it, I like it, I just care about the financing.
One or two?
And one of the other things too, that we could do is put the, put in the proposal for two, and you could do it in stages, you know, that could be another, another area of consideration. And, and Darrell, we've talked about this several times, right? I mean, you could buy, you could donate, you could prepare the pad for the second one, right?
I'm not made and married to any specific-
Method.
Method or number, here's my concern, is I don't want to say paralysis by analysis, got an issue, let's get something going. All I do, and if it takes four votes to do it, I'm one of them.
Me too.
You're still talking about a million dollars.
Understood.
Okay, so I think we should put some more time into thinking one or two, but what the heck, it's still a million dollars to her.
It's the money, I mean.
And that doesn't include financing.
And as, and as Pat said, the financing would be a hundred thousand a year, let's just say, we're saving fifty thousand of that, so we can spend it anyways, when the removal of the sludge.
Well, you had it backwards, the financing is special.
Fifty thousand, two million.
It is.
You know, according to his premium, I would think, which was in the far less, if we do one press, it'd be in the far less, uh, but if you're able to eliminate a hundred thousand dollars minimum of the trucking, and you can find out, you know, from the other, you know, vendors that I've talked to, that have come in here and bid on all kinds of things, you know, I'm hopefully going to be pleasantly surprised to inform council that the cost for this specialized trucking is less, would love to be able to see that.
I'm excited.
Everybody that's coming up here to say that tanker trucks are in short supply, and-
It's not efficient.
It, well, because it's fracking. Every, all the available tankers are going to.
Frank oil?
It's just, it's just not a model.
Maybe.
And before we move forward, Director Finance has a comment.
I just have a question. If we're going to bring this back, and the agreement was part of the legislation, do you want me to ask Johnson to rewrite their agreement to only have sludge?
Yes.
Nothing else?
Yes.
Okay. I will reach out to them tomorrow, but I don't know if that would be timely enough for next week, but I will.
I feel like she will.
No, no. To that point, are we going to bring it off the table and amend, do third reading, or are we going to start from scratch? Chair, vice chair?
Off the table and amend?
Off the table and amend?
Yes. Off the table and amend, so they, she could have that by next week. Laura. Okay.
I certainly will.
One last point. Is there a way, Matt, or Laura, you can put together an operational cost savings we feel this will present to us? Not knowing that the other bids are coming in yet. You know, you know, like you said, your drying, your drying pad, you have to run the tank on whatever. That's got to enter into this, this is part of this. It's not just a one-sided, you know, sledge press. We're looking long-term. What else can this do for us? Right? That, you gotta, you gotta envision.
Hey, Pat, could we just have our own semi and our own driver just trucking?
For a million bucks, you could, for a million bucks. Okay, so.
How much do we buy a rig on?
Yeah. Okay, so, we're done. We got it on the, uh, the agenda. Yes, sir.
I don't have a copy of the legislation.
You put that table on, they re-earr on the table.
Well, so I have the kind.
Go ahead, Daryl, I'm sorry.
I don't have a copy of the legislation table. Do you have an emergency provision?
We take a little two pieces, one for the appropriations and one for the agreement. I believe that the agreement had an emergency clause.
Then, you're going to have to strip that emergency clause out because you may not have enough votes to pass an emergency. Unless you got, unless you get six. So you should be prepared to amend it and strip it out. Because if you don't have votes, it's a defeat.
Okay, go forward. Oh, yeah, they got it on the table. May I have a motion in a second to take both pieces?
Do that next week.
Do that next week? We can do that next week?
Yeah, you had to do it next week.
Next week.
Yeah, okay, that's right, yeah. Okay, we, we, is it going to be on the agenda? Once we put it on the agenda?
We put it on the agenda.
Okay.
It's on the table right now.
Don't we have to make a motion to put it on the agenda?
Yeah, I mean, this is committee, so.
Okay.
And you can do, you can vote to take it off the table. You can do that in a minute.
You'll have to, you'll have to vote for sure next week.
Sure.
Long director says I can, in committee, take it off the table. So is there a motion in a second to take both pieces? But we'll have to number on those.
I think it's 42.
It is 28 and 29.
Ordinance is 28 and 29 off the table. We can vote next week if there are motion in a second.
So, second?
On favor?
Aye.
Vote.
Aye.
Sarete and Nag?
No, I'm good.
Good? Okay. Good to go.
All right, next up, we have ordinance rules claims, general vote. Last week, we had a little conversation about committee minutes. And the water director and I have conferred, the council president and I have conferred, and we have a proposal for consideration by council. And that is, we take a two-pronged approach. The first is that if we have a court reporter present, that transcript constitute a committee's minutes. Because in effect, the committee business is being discussed, just like we did tonight.
Yes.
Okay? So, that means that, in effect, we have, we have committee minutes. We may not have them, however, by the time of the vote because they'll be in process, being transcribed. I believe that if the council president, as he did tonight, asks for, if four members are asked the chairman to assure that there are four members, in effect, the committee is agreed to proceed.
He did do that.
And he did that tonight. So what in effect we're proposing is that we, if we have the court reporter, the president of council, or the committee chair, ask for a vote of four to proceed with legislation, then we can, the discussion's occurred. The rationale has been provided. The scope of the legislation has been discussed, and we can proceed. That in effect becomes a minutes as required in our, in our rules.
So we don't do these anymore?
No.
Okay.
If, by chance, we do not have the court reporter, then we do these. Now, what's important, however, is that if you will note on the reports, we also ask the committee chairman to identify who from the administration is present. And so it becomes incumbent upon the council president at the opening of the meeting on the record indicate that the mayor, the director of administration, engineer, etc., are present for the conversation. So they're here. So the record is established. I forgot to do that. That's okay.
I gotta write it down. Who's here?
This is, this will place, um, section 11106, the council meeting agenda, as member of all that stated, that what is a committee report, it's a written report or notice that the meeting's transcribed. And that the president polled the members of council to see that there's a majority and bring it in. And then 11, or 11101 is simply straight, states that the transcribed meeting shall state those city officials in attendance seated at the dais. So we'll ask the court reporter if they would reach meaning those, um, public officials that sit at the dais who will know who's for all time. Actually, today I looked at minutes for 1949, and I could see who was in attendance at the meeting. So this will just state those others beside council, the elected officials at the dais.
Having lived in both worlds, I think having the court reporter record the conversation is a superior way to memorialize why council has decided to act. It's a fuller, more complete report than just say council authorized legislation on emergency to adopt, you know, sledge measures.
And that's all those 1949 minutes.
Yeah.
Selected to village that voted in favor of an ordinance.
So I think this is, if, if we can, what we'd like to do is try this. I think it, it answers this question about whether you have authorization or specifically authorizing it. It will be in minutes that come probably after you take, ask that first vote. But nonetheless, the minutes are there for letting the action of authorizing legislation has occurred on the record.
And also, like, the load right now, the extra side, we're trying with finance being clerk?
Yeah. So that's, that's, that's this chairman's proposal. If there are some who would like to vote, we'll have it stuck on the agenda.
On the agenda.
I got it.
On the agenda.
Okay. Then, Mr. President, there seems to be unanimous consent that we have this amendment to council rules 111.06 on the agenda. What, at your convenience?
Okay, 11101.
Excuse me, 11101.
Both of those.
01 and 06. Yes. Thank you, sir.
Laura?
Jeff, the, one of the things that you and I had spoken about in regards to this was, like you said, the finance department taking on the role of clerk. We had said originally that we would do that until the summer break so that you guys could have a chance to say whether you wanted to continue. It was a trial period. I'm not trying to put you on the spot here tonight on the floor, but if you can give us an indication in the next couple of weeks, the summer break is coming. That if you don't wish to continue, then we would need to, you know, go in a direction for after summer break.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes our next segment.
We have an amendment. I would like to move item four, be added to the agenda. That is discussion of state-funded signage on Market Avenue.
That's right, so what we're.
That's a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Motion carries.
So what we're looking for is, um, State Route 43, we need some signs on the side of the city, and it's 100% funded by the state. And so I move that we pass that on emergency because time is of the essence. And then Patrick can explain if there's anything more you need to know.
Uh, yes, we apologize for putting the council in a position where they have to amend the agenda. However, this came in Friday, May 31st, just a couple of days ago, after hours, from ODAS. And it's their project, they want to replace the roadway signage along Route 43 that's inside the city limits. Uh, I just thought that the agenda wasn't that long, and we throw it in now, rather than make them wait till June 10th and then pass it on the 24th. If we can do it tonight and then pass it next week, that would put them in a better happy spot. ODAS agreed, we tried to keep in a happy spot.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I'm able to get it on the agenda then.
All right, everyone agree with that?
Yes.
Thank you for that. Say agenda next one. All right. Everyone have fun tonight, huh?
Yes, sir.
All right. What's your, what's your, your second? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Your chair?
I was excited.
We have some.
We do.
We're not going to be doing it for a year.
Good, I see you doing this. Well, we just wait up. No, we should.
We're listening. They were talking somewhere. They don't know.
But I, that's really God, right? I was just saying, I want to.
They're always just mad. They're always.
You know, they do, and they don't.
It's just like.
You want to make sure that bar's a number, or if you got on there.
What?
I'm here.
I agree. I'm not. I'm. 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 I'm.